Okay, good afternoon. It's two o'clock. That's the time that was noticed and posted for our work session. It's Tuesday, February the sixth, 2024, and it is two o'clock PM. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh two page, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any items on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosby is here.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board then. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four, conference ID six nine five nine eight four five nine one pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions, as is routine for our work sessions, should be as a person begins to speak, if they will introduce themselves for the permanent record. And today, we have the engineering and natural resources discussion and flood control. And I want to thank you all for scheduling these on a regular basis to keep us up to date on what's going on. So Jackie Watkins, if you would start the conversation?
Thank you. Jackie Watkins, Director of Engineering and Natural Resources. This is the engineering division. We have Mosin Road. And Mosin Road is planning. We're going to design Mosin Road and its planning was in 2023. We're ADOT is administering the project, and they've advertised for a consultant to design it that closed in January. So they're in the process now of hiring the consultant that will take two to three months. We have the IGAs in already completed, and we paid them about ninety thousand dollars. The design funds we have is one million from the service to NPO. It's probably going to be about one and a half million, but we have six point one million from the legislative funds from the state of Arizona for construction, so that will also then cover the cost. We anticipate design to go through the middle of 2025. Part of the design will be to get the NEPA clearance. And once we have NEPA clearance, we can start acquiring right away. There's about forty-four properties that we need to acquire right away on. And anticipated total cost of construction for the whole seven point eight miles of road is about twenty-three million. So we'll phase the design to start, you know, during the design, we'll have two or three different phases so we can phase in the construction.
Before you leave that one, that six point one million from the legislature, I was under the impression that that was being clawed back.
That is already in our bank account. So we already have that most funds. They can't take that back. It's deposited to the county. We did two IGAs on Mosin Road with ADOT, and one was to accept the six point one million per construction.
So we got it before they?
We got it before they could take it away.
Well, some of those that were intended aren't going to be able to get going, so thank you.
Yeah, so we do have that fund. It's in, it's already in a separate fund account for. Davis Road. It's a project that's been going on for over twenty years. It's twenty-four mile road, major collector. We have a declared width of two hundred feet from Central to one ninety-one. And this project is to add shoulders to the road to increase the safety for the additional traffic that will happen from the port of entry. These are the project locations. Number one is the complete Davis Road project that goes from Highway eighty, SR eighty-two, US one ninety-one. Number two is the project that we're currently doing. For design, the design is about ninety-five percent. We're having a contractor, the consultant, complete that design. We're in right-of-way acquisition on that. So this is SR eighty-two Central. We were awarded a two million dollar raised grant for that. That project, we are working with federal highways as a direct recipient for that fund, still going through ADOT. Because when we do the direct recipient, then the NEPA clearance will be done by federal highways, and it won't cost us anything. Part of that two million will now be spent for the NEPA clearance. We had the kickoff meeting in October, so we're just waiting for federal highways to accept the, all the documents that we've sent them. And this will be to design it for thirty percent design, the NEPA clearance, so that we could start acquiring right away. And this is to add shoulders to the road. We did a study in 2016 that was completed, and that was just an assessment study that showed future traffic to have a four-lane road highway there, divided highway. This study will then just get us the thirty percent design plans just to widen the shoulders and take out some of the curves that are sharp. So it's not to make it a four-lane highway, because it doesn't justify a four-lane highway until the port of entry is open and traffic would have to triple to.
What about the two intersections?
The intersection of one ninety-one and the intersection of Central is being done under the Central to one eighty, one ninety-one project. So that one's already been designed ninety-five percent on that. The total cost of construction that we anticipate for the Davis Road would be seventy-three million. We'd have to go out and find funding for that. So the two intersections you were talking about, this is this project here, we're acquiring right away. We have eleven properties, six of them we've already closed, three of them, two of them are in escrow, and three we're still negotiating with the property owners. And then the design plans are at ninety-five percent. And we're finishing the scope of work to have the consultant take that up to a hundred percent, and they get NEPA clearance, and that will be through ADOT also. And then we will have to try to go out and find construction funds, because it's a six point five million dollar project for construction. Because at Central and Davis, we're putting a lot of drainage structures in there to keep the, and make it wider for the trucks to turn.
I was gonna say, I'll be glad when that's fixed, so I can actually turn that corner with a truck without taking all of the, all of the road.
So we don't have funds for the construction, but with the border infrastructure fund, there's high probability that we'll get grants for that because of the port of entry. And then Monopole five and thirteen. Those are the drainage bridges culverts that we're putting in. We've completed Monopole nine. That project started in 2003, but that project they started, we applied for seven million grand dollars of grant, they only got two point six four. So that project has been going on since 2003.
Yeah.
It was in 2016, 2017 that we had the funds to construct Monopole nine. And this is to give an all-weather crossing at the twenty-five-year event. Because Davis Road gets closed because of flooding during the monsoon season. And this will be to alleviate the closing of Davis Road for Monopole five and thirteen. That's just one of the wide loads that went through last month, or December, that one kept through in December. In the Douglas Land Port of Entry. That's being constructed west of Douglas by GSA, the federal government. And they say that it's on track to open up in 2028. The city of Douglas is coordinating all the utility installations for the gas, electric broadband, and they're extending their sewer lines and water lines out there to service the port. ADOT is doing the DCR for the connector road with NEPA clearance. It has not been decided who's going to own the road, because it is within county. It's not within the city of Douglas city limits. They are trying to annex it. But right now it's in the county, and then it would be negotiated between county and ADOT, who's going to own the road. The design and construction cost for that is between fifty-two and sixty-two million. The DCR should be completed by the end of this calendar year. And their GSA is requesting a watershed study for the commercial and for the drainage that is in that area. There's sheet flow, one to two feet of water, and it's pretty much flooding the whole area. So the commercial port needs commercial land that they can be developed where all the infrastructure that will be going on with the new port being over there for the trucks that are coming through for storage.
Madam Chair, Crosby, District one.
Go ahead, Tom.
I was wondering, Ms. Watkins, if you could tell me what the abbreviation is DCR?
Design Concept Report, sorry.
Good, that's okay. Thank you.
And then, so in the Design Concept Report, that's typically when you get your NEPA clearance also for right-of-way and the construction of the project. In county design projects, we have, the county has sixty-one bridges that are inspected by ADOT. A few of those are in fair and poor rating. And so we're going to hire a consultant, a structural engineer, to do a five-year plan of plant of bridges that are in fair and poor condition that need to be upgraded, and then to give us an overall twenty-year replacement plan so that we have a plan for the next twenty years of which ones need to be either retrofitted or upgraded or removed and replaced. And we also applied for a design grant for off-system bridges through federal highways for the bridge on Rucker Road. It's a wooden bridge, and that's just for the design. And then once we get designed, because those grant opportunities come out every two years. And if we get it designed, then the next time we can go out and get construction funds for it.
How long is that bridge?
It's not very, it's not real long.
It's a pretty good size though.
Yeah, it's the one on Rucker itself, the one that has the bypass that you go through and wash it gray.
And how many culverts have we replaced on Leslie Canyon?
That's further down in the thing, but there's going to be two that we're going to replace. We replaced two on John Multerell. We've done those. And so then we have two that we're going to work, and we're about ninety percent design plans that we have now done.
Okay.
And then in Sun sights, Sun sights, the community, Sun sights community contacted us to find out what we could do about the sidewalks there, because the sidewalks are within the county right-of-way. And so we're in the study phase to find out what our options are to replace the deteriorated concrete that's out there and to enhance the sidewalk for the pedestrians along Sun sights. If we're in the, it's called the frontage road, it's the frontage road for all the businesses there.
Do they have a lot of people walking in?
All, because all those businesses, they do, you know, going from the post office to the hardware store and.
So Chairman English, the, the main area where people go in and out is at the post office, and it's actually been a falling hazard. They asked us a little while back, and I'm so glad we're working on it. And that is right there on our street, frontage, frontage road. So we, we do need to replace that. So thank you.
And to update the parking spaces that are there for handicapped also. In the Leslie Canyon culvert replacements, we are doing Monopole eight point six and ten point five, depending on the cost estimate, but we're about ninety-five percent done on the plan, or ninety percent done on the plans. And then we'll get the specifications to get a bid-ready package out and work with purchasing to get a contractor to do that construction.
So it's going to be contracted, not internal?
It'd be contracted, because it'd be over the bricks, it's between five hundred thousand and a million dollars to do those two bridges.
Okay.
Those culverts. We use precast box culverts so that we have a deter on the side, so that traffic's not interrupted as much. And then we're also working on the foothills parking lot to upgrade the, or to replace the asphalt and ADA compliance to the buildings.
So we're going to chew up the old asphalt? I told us the last work session that we had a new chewing machine.
Oh.
Or is it just ordered?
It would be asphalt, so Ops wouldn't be able to do it, because it's not chip seal, it's an asphalt pavement. And then just some stats for the last calendar year that we had. Survey, we've completed the legal description for the Douglas annexation, and that's for the property west of Douglas out to the new port of entry. They're wanting to annex that. And in signing, we installed about thirty-one hundred signs, so that's about fifteen a day, and that's including new signs, replacing existing signs, signs that are damaged or stolen or the winds damaged them. Traffic counts, we have one thousand four hundred and thirty-three miles of maintained roads, and that's over one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine different roads. So we do traffic counts, we set counters out and pick them up almost every week. And typically for a seven-day count, you know, we'll get speed and classification on those.
I thought Seago did that.
Seago uses our data. And then Seago only does the major roads. They don't do all the minor roads that we have. Because our federally classified roads, we have to count every six years. But we count all of our roads. We have sixteen counters, and so we put out three or four every week.
Good.
And then the right-of-way, we did four hundred and twenty-eight permits, fifty-three oversized overweight permits for the wide loads. Ninety-nine percent on Davis Road, and then sixteen special events. That's parades, bikes, bike events, running and walking events. And in the flood control district, we get sixty-five floodplain use permits, hundred and fifty-five erosion hazard setbacks. So those are properties, people building that's next to a wash, how far that back they have to set so it doesn't erode their house away. And that ninety-six FEMA flood zone inquiries. And then in administrative actions, we're going to update our neighborhood traffic management program procedures. The last time it was updated was in 2003, and that there's been changes on how to, you know, speed humps, little traffic circles and stuff have changed. So we're going to update that to be more updated standards. And then we're updating our road standards. That was updated in 2017, so we're updating our specification and details. We're analyzing what our permit fees are for flood control, different district permits, for commercial reviews. Commercial reviews take a lot more time to review. Sometimes the reviews are take three to six months, just back and forth with the designer. So we're analyzing that to increase the fee for commercial reviews. And then on the right-of-ways, the last time it was increased was in 2009. So we're looking at the special event fees, some of the ones that have the longer routes, like the bike race, some of those are like three or four meetings that staff is putting on, and so we want to increase that fee. And utilities, because if a utility is putting in new utilities, they'll be out there constructing three or four months, and the inspector's going out there every day to inspect. So we took in forty-four thousand dollars in permit fees for right-of-way, and the cost for the county for staff and vehicle was like hundred ninety-six thousand. So we're going to propose to see what we can to balance it, to get it more like fifty percent is what we're shooting for. And on the flood control, it would just be more, we're looking for his, the commercial fees, because all the residents in the county are paying flood control tax. So we're not so much on the residence for the floodplain use permit, but the commercial review, because that's where it takes time from the staff. So we're just trying to recoup some of our costs. And then we're going to ask the board, I'm asking for another full-time employee for the flood control district.
To do what?
Well, because the staff's at capacity, right now the staff's at capacity, we can't do anymore. And it would need it for commercial reviews for the MS four from ADQ, because the MS four, I have another slide further down, but our MS four and the floodplain use permits with ADWR, they come down once a year to do their inspections. And that's taken time, and then additional projects that are possible for the board, depending if the board wants us to do this or not, is the Sulfur Springs Water Alliance Group, who is in the Sulfur Springs Valley, Wilcox, El Frito, Douglas. There's a group that wants to try to mirror what the, is happening in San Pedro Valley with the Upper San Pedro Partnership and the CCRN projects to do the same type of projects for recharge in the Sulfur Springs. So that would take a lot of staff time to do that, if the board wants us to do that. And then applying for grants, you know, we're working with Fort Ruchuka to get more funds for Sentinel landscape, Sentinel landscape. And the watershed studies, like the port of entry watershed study would take staff time, and so we to justify, that's what the justification is, because if we don't, we're just gonna, we won't be able to do some of these studies. We just don't have time.
So you're talking about an engineer?
No, not an engineer. I think we have enough engineers, PEs on staff, but someone that could do studies more like what Mark does. Because there's another project was the Triun University Recharge and Water Reliability Project. That's working with NAU, UVA and ASU. It's through the Board of Regents, through their Technology Research Initiative Fund. And they are doing watershed harvesting, flooding, and they are contacting all the flood control districts to be part of that team. And so, you know, for us to be, have somebody on that. And then the Corps of Engineers, the city of Douglas, you know, the feasibility, another study is the feasibility on Rose and Palm Grove Wash. We got an email today on that, at the Corps of Engineers wanting to do some more studies on Palm Grove Wash and Rose. And to do that would take staff time. And it being that those projects are actually for flood control, it would be nice if we can partner with the Corps to do those studies. And that study, especially on Bay Acres, then that might, that would be a different option to do on Bay Acres instead of putting in the channel that we're getting designed right now. So that's, that's what the, another full-time person would be to help do all those projects.
The reason I asked, it was an engineer, because typically they've been very hard to find.
Yeah, because we have four PEs now, and that's that should be adequate for the department, but we just need someone to do watershed studies to help Joaquin do in hydrology reports, to review in hydrology ports. Doesn't necessarily take a PE to do that, just someone with some science background. And then flood control district. FEMA should have, they told us by June of this year, they started in 2019, but by June of this year, we will have the preliminary flood studies done for Benson, Munchuka City, Sierra Vista and Hereford. And then the Bisbee and St. David remapping, we have not heard from them for a month. They're still doing those studies. Typically, they take, you know, three to four years to do. And these FEMA maps are being funded by FEMA themselves. It's not costing flood control district. But the base level engineering, which is taking all the washes that is in the county so that then it's easier for us to tell people how high they have to build their house. They're doing base level engineering for all the major water courses. And that was supposed to have been completed last summer. We're still not completed. They're not still, they're still not completing on that FEMA. So we hope to get that one completed by the summer.
I thought that the LiDAR that we did was going to take care of that.
The LiDAR helps us to analyze someone's specific parcel, but the quantity of water and the flood and the elevation FEMA is giving us that. They're using our LiDAR. The LiDAR, yes, we couldn't be able to tell the, a resident on their parcel how high they have to have their house if we hadn't had the LiDAR information, because it's two-foot contours.
I don't know if you have any way to track this or not, but is the public utilizing that?
Yes. Well, I know we let them know, and they're very grateful that we have it.
Well, the public, meaning even other engineers or, you know, builders or whatever.
Other engineers are very glad when we tell them, and developers, like all the solar plants that have been coming in. When we tell them, yeah, the county has two-foot contours on LiDAR, they're like, really? You guys have that? And so then they can go get that information. And the, the raw data is on USGS's site, the federal government has that. And if they want, they can send us a sixteen terabyte hard drive, and then we copy it for them, because it's massive data.
Well, it sounded as though it would be a real a real good thing for the public to have access to, and not just public like me, but you know, the, the general public to have that information that everybody didn't have figured out for themselves.
And it helps us when we're talking to someone about, yeah, you have to build your house up two feet, and that we can show them, oh, this is the wash that's coming through, and this is the elevation, and this is the way the water flows. So they, residents have used it also, but a lot of the designers for the commercial development has.
Good. I just, you, you often wonder, the expenses that you put out, you know, are they being utilized and was it worth it?
Personally, I use that every day. I, I use the LiDAR stuff every single day.
Good.
Answering citizens' questions, residents. It's a lot easier to go there and tell them exactly what's happening. Then watershed studies, we do have Palm Marine. We still want to hire a consultant to analyze what that's happening on Palm Marine Road. The Wilcox Basin. We applied for a grant this time last year. We're still waiting. The FEMA Arizona DEMA has not heard anything from FEMA about when they're going to release those funds, or release those projects. They haven't done that. And then the Corps of Engineer. We're doing a watershed study on Rucker Canyon, and that's for the flooding that happened in El Frito in 2022. So that was a grant, or it was a study that we applied for, and we were successful. And we're having that kickoff meeting tomorrow with the Corps. And then in St. David, we were wanting to do some study on the west side of San Pedro River, because there's a little bit of land over there for sheet flooding. And we have not heard back from them on that. They haven't released that, those type of studies yet. But the past study.
Is that where that subdivision was going to be?
Not, yes, but closer to the river, not up by High ninety. Then our MS four. We sent out mailers, flyers about what the MS four is, and that's part of our requirement from ADQ to send those out, and those cost about eight thousand dollars to send out. And our fee from ADQ for our MS four is just over seven thousand a year. And because of test results that came back from the one here in Bisbee, the area that we monitor in Bisbee with sulfur, we're going to have to revise our stormwater management plan because of that test result. So we're going to have to add another testing location to show that where is the contaminant coming from. Well, because of Bisbee and the mines, we know where it's coming from, but we have to just prove that. So we will be adding another testing location for the MS.
And then what do we do about it?
Then we know that it's coming from Bisbee, so I'm saying we won't have to do anything about it. But because FMI, they've been doing their soil restoration projects, and then we would get with them, so maybe there's something upstream, because the testing location we have is right off of Nacal Highway and Sunset Acres. So we'll have to see. And then Leslie Canyon Pond. Joaquin to talk about that, because this is his projects.
It's your baby.
Yes, it is. I'm Joaquin's police, I'm the floodplain administrator. And so Leslie Canyon Pond, we have our consultant on board that's doing the analysis for this. So that ways we can meet the Arizona Department of Water Resources requirements for that, for that pond. It's a jurisdictional dam, and so we need to remove it. That ways citizens and stuff are actually safe from, from flooding. There was a breach that happened, and I think I had mentioned this the, the last time. There was a breach that happened, and I think I had mentioned this the last time. There was a breach that happened that sent the water in another direction. And so the consultant we have is designing to to lower that spillway so that ways it can go into the, in the place that it's supposed to be going. It's just when we met with ADWR, there was additional requirements and stuff that they are having us do. So that ways, so what we're doing right now is is doing our design, but also making sure that we meet their requirement. So once we submit to them, then it's it's approved by them, and then we can continue on with that.
Does that pond belong to the water company out there?
That belongs to the Leslie Canyon Water Users. And and so to do.
So how are we taking it on?
So to do this project, in order to get assistance from ADWR, we have to own that that parcel. And so.
I didn't think you'd snuck it in on me. That's why I was wondering, don't they still own that pond?
And so we're looking into obtaining that that parcel. That ways, whenever we meet with ADWR, and they can give us possible fundings. But it's with an agreement that Cochise County owns it and not just a regular individual or individuals.
So, yeah, before we, we're wanting to get the project designed and approved by ADWR, because it can take up to six months to get their approval on the project. Before we then, we would bring to the board to have the water users, the group over there, homeowners association, transfer that, because that is a, that does function as a flood control dam. So it's, you know, they don't have enough money even to repair the breach. So they want to repair the breach that, you know, there's not very many homes are out there. So they don't have the funds to do it. So to me, it is a flood control district project. It should be, because it actually does provide flood control for the people downstream.
And I I understand all that, and there's two there, and FMI owns the other one.
And they already removed theirs, they took.
And they took theirs down, but they still haven't given it to us as part of the flood control district.
Well, they can keep it.
So you don't want it?
Well, no, it's because theirs isn't really, they're that, those two structures they removed, so it's not providing any flood control for downstream properties.
But it's in the waterway.
It's in the waterway, but they removed their dam, so there's no more dam there.
And so everything that comes through their pond goes across Leslie Canyon Road.
Correct, correct. All of this water goes across Leslie Canyon.
And that's why I was wondering, from the beginning, I thought we wanted, we meaning flood control, wanted control of that waterway so that we not only could have a say about Leslie Canyon Road, but about all the flooding that was coming off of the breach on the first pond.
And and initially, we did, but because Freeport-Mackay chose to breach it completely instead of partially containing it like like the county's doing for the Leslie Canyon Pond, because they breached it completely, it's just basically a chat.
Right.
So that that's why, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't serve as a as a flood control treatment.
But it's still a channel.
Yes.
Okay.
And the channel's the natural channel, so the channel would stay there, correct?
Channel is always there.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're going in the right direction, because I know I worked with FMI for a long time, and they spent a ton of money getting rid of that.
And the construction is about three and a half million is what we're anticipating in ADWR would do cost share on that.
I don't know how we get into these messes, you know?
Well, this one here is because it is for flood control. This is, I think this is a good project.
It is a good project.
Right.
But it wasn't one that we.
Anticipated.
Well, and we weren't part of it from the beginning. If we're part of something from the beginning, then, you know, we have a an idea of what it's gonna take to maintain it and blah, blah, blah. Well, we come in when it isn't maintained.
Yeah, this was done in the sixties, I think, right?
Even I wasn't here in the sixties on the board. I take no blame for that. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The Bay Acres.
And Bakers is is another project that that we're we're working on. The photo that you see is is a flood that's coming out of the Colonia, just upstream of that. And and this project is to reroute that flow so that ways it takes it away from the Colonia. And we can get it through an alignment system and and keep it from spreading like you see in in the photo and just control it in one direction, then get it underneath the the bridge structure at A Avenue in Douglas.
I want that put on my tombstone. She worked on Bakers for twenty years.
Well, and then with the Corps, you know, the Corps is initiating a study to do nonstructural stuff for flooding, sub improvements. So we'll just see if, you know, what they would come up with. We've talked to them, but, you know, depends on the funding, how much they want us to participate in that study. And then Coyote Wash, well, she will complete design this year, calendar year. We're having the NEPA clearance. We have the draft EA, and we'll put that out for public comments in March, early March. And then we'll have a virtual public meeting towards the mid or the end of March for the NEPA clearance. And we will also have card copies at the library in Sierra Vista. We have one point five million dollars for construction, and we'll continue to apply for grants. The estimated cost at this point is about five millions for that project. But with the NEPA clearance, then the public will be able to comment on the NEPA stuff. And that draft will be the draft, and then we'll have the public meeting in March, and then try to have everything finalized by July.
I'm just a curiosity, those two little fish that are there, they're not endangered species?
No, they're not. You can, there's the hook there, so you can catch them.
Every project has all these pitfalls.
And then in the Upper San Pedro Partnership or the San Pedro Projects. We're doing Riverstone. We're in phase two, we're still doing site investigation. In fact, they were out there today doing two test pits on that project for the recharge location. That project is being handled by the City of Sierra Vista, it's a co-funded project. And we should have final completing phase two site investigation by the end of this calendar year, and then we will go into getting design done and permitting on that project, and then construction funds. Horseshoe Draw, we're designing the outlet and try to get that fixed this summer. We did the inlet, we've already fixed that one from the two thousand, twenty twenty two flooding. The Bisbee effluent. We're doing it, there's a design concept report, the DCR, and that's supposed to be completed this fall. And then working with Board Patrol, BLM, on the location of to have where the recharge is gonna happen. And then we would go into design on that project and doing the option on the effluent from the Bisbee, City of Bisbee. Because that's towards the end of this year, too.
So when they're doing the design concept, is it now gonna go by the river? Is it coming up to the highway? Or, I mean, they can't study the whole thing, that's too many.
Well, the design concept goes from the city's sewer plant off of Purdy Lane down to the river along the border.
Along the border.
Along the border. We had other options of going through the ranch property or along ninety or along ninety two, but the quickest route would be along the border, working with Rosaral Reservation.
Well, I I knew that it had been talked about going through the ranch, but talk about dead on arrival, I mean, talking to the ranch owner, it was kind of like, no, it's not gonna happen in his lifetime.
Correct.
Some other owner might do, but he wasn't going to. Well, great, any board member have any questions or comments? I'm sorry, I was kind of asking a lot of questions, because you weren't here asking questions. You have questions, comments?
I just want to thank Ms. Watkins and Mr. Solis for being with us today. And I hope that I will be able to look at each of these projects on a case by case basis and give them a fair look. Thank you.
And and I wanted to add something to the Wilcox recharge projects that you mentioned, an organization that the Sulfur Springs, but there is another organization, Rural Water Assurance, that also has their five oh one C three, and is working hard on that. And I think that Mr. Appel is working most closely with the Natural Resource Conservation District and Ms. Thompson on that. So I just want you to know there's, that that is a solid organization that's able to get funding and has helped a lot with our recharge of the Upper San Pedro. So that's a, that's a good thing. So anyway, I wanted to mention that.
Are we working with the NRCS?
Well, with our watershed study, if we get that grant, we will be working with them. And then they're going after grants also, but we're at capacity. We won't be able to help and go after those other grants.
Right. Well, sometimes the money may be available, but you don't have time to administer, work on it. Grants are time consuming.
Grants, yeah, even if you have a consultant, you know, doing the study themselves, still takes a lot of time even to apply for the grant and then to manage the grants.
So your need for a, or not an engineer, your need for another staff member to do what Mark does. And isn't Mark retiring? Aren't we sort of just replacing Mark?
It's in anticipation when he does in the next two years or so. To bring somebody up to up to speed on that, correct?
I totally get that. Well, it touched me to my core. We need that person, because we really do appreciate what you're doing and and with much anticipation in our valley. There was another flood thing too. You're you're doing a study on the Rucker Canyon watershed. And is there any looking at recharge in that valley they needed to also?
Well, that's, you know, the watershed study might be able to look at some locations of where you could put in recharges that would enhance it. But so the full time person we're asking for is flood control. So it's, you know, the flood control district money's not the general fund. So flood controls, yes. And we do have the funds for it, but we will process that through the board.
A great person who's excited about it. Thank you.
So does that go into your budget? Is that what you're asking for?
Well.
Either that or we can present it to the board.
Present it to the board so that we can have it start before waiting for the budget to go in next year. We were wanting to try to advertise and get that position on board, that person on board.
So just picking out the feelers today.
Well, to notify the board, to see if you guys were in agreement, correct? Before bringing it as a board action.
I I didn't show one way or the other, did I?
No.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come before this work session? Again, a lot of work you all are doing, and thank you. I think, having said that, the next meeting will be Tuesday, February the thirteenth for the board, ten o'clock, and it is a special board meeting. So having said that, this meeting is adjourned.